Now called to order, would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, please proceed. First public hearing is regarding a planning and zoning issue. Is there any public comment? Oh, skipped over. Ms. Lawrence, would you please call roll?
Mr. Haas? Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Present.
And Mr. Lombardo. You have nine of eleven present.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on the proposed ordinance for the Luzerne County zoning map issue with the .49 acres in Newport Township?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second by Ms. Krishnowski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned, thank you. Start the next meeting up in two minutes.
Any other public hearings? If anybody called to order, can you decide?
I'll get it sooner or later. Next public hearing is now called to order, it's 5:55 PM. We said the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Lawrence, will you please call roll?
Mr. Haas? Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo? Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Ten of eleven present.
Ten of eleven, thank you. We'll now open the floor to public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2025 fiscal year budget. Any public comment on that item? Appears there's no public comment, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned, thank you. We'll start the regular voting session meeting in four minutes. It is now 6:01 PM, the voting session is now called to order. We said the pledge of allegiance already, so we'll go on to roll call. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo? Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
And Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Nine, or ten of eleven present.
Thank you. We don't have any recognitions or ceremonial proclamations. Are there any alterations or deletions from the voting session agenda tonight?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to remove number 11 from the agenda because we just got a new lease yesterday.
Number 11?
Yep.
Is the... We have a motion and a second on the question? Because we received new information, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Roll call vote, Ms. Lawrence?
If I could, Mr. ...
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Haas.
Can I speak to that question? Is there a deadline for the lease to take place? Are we under the gun for, to make this happen?
No, we are not.
No.
So, we can postpone for two weeks? Okay, all right, thank you.
Roll call vote, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Haas?
Yes, postpone.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So, that was number 11. Any other deletions or alterations?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask to make a motion to remove number seven. Due to the fact that we've gotten some conflicting legal opinions going on and we would like to make sure that we do this properly and support our veterans in the correct legal manner.
Right, so we have a motion?
Second.
Second.
On the question?
Ms. Stevenson, on the question. Go ahead, Ms. Smith. Oh, go ahead, Ms. McDermott.
I have a question in reference to the memo from Attorney Jarrett Ferantino. He has, on the last page of that, kind of conflicting information, so I wonder if he'd be able to clarify it. The counties that he listed in here, Lehigh, Carbon Pike, and Lackawanna, all have a tax exemption for non-war time. Each one of their resolutions mention non-war time. They have to be 100% disabled. So, he has in here that all four of those counties, their changes conform to the constitutional mandate, exemption for veterans who are 100% disabled due to the service-related injuries, wartime service, and their unremarried spouses. And then a little bit below, he says, Lehigh, Carbon Pike, and Lackawanna counties have tailored the implementation such as specific deduction caps and focus solely on qualifying disabilities, but have remained within the bounds of state constitutional and statutory authority. So, he's saying that they remained within the constitutional authority.
Point of origin, Mr. Chair? Point, I'm sorry, only have a point of origin. Should we leave this on the agenda and really talk about it and maybe postpone it after if we have a problem?
Well...
Because I'm sure he has some other good questions.
I could understand bringing it up only so that the officer law could look into her comments, and we don't need to debate it tonight, but just state your concerns, what you have.
Well, I think we actually have an answer. We have an answer. What he...
Well, let me, are you finished, Ms. McDermott?
Well, yeah, I have, well, yes.
I'm sorry.
Just, again, to me, it seems conflicting if he's saying that those four counties conform to the constitutional mandate. I think that was the question, whether it was constitutional or not.
Okay.
I would rather not discuss confidential office of law memos in public, because the public wouldn't have it because it's confidential.
Right, okay.
So, we could talk about that off the record, non-final.
And we might want to have an executive session in two weeks, if so desired.
But I'll answer Lee's question, I'll write back to her.
Okay, great. Ms. Smith?
The, in my own research and discussion, it's my understanding that those ordinances as they stand in those counties are within the boundaries of what they can do, so as long as we don't do anything farther than what they're doing, which our ordinance does not, we're fine.
Okay.
Could we maybe move it to the work session?
I would be okay to move it, to amend it, to move to the work session.
I don't know if you'd remove it.
There will be.
There will be in a few...
Yes.
Yeah, there will be. I would be happy to amend the motion to move this item to the work session.
Do you want to reverse your motion?
Yeah, I will draw my motion and remake the motion to push this to the work session.
Okay. Anybody second?
Second.
Ms. Krishnowski, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed.
Mr. Chair?
Move to the work session?
Yes, sir. May I ask one quick question? Would we be able to do a quick executive session in between the meetings to discuss it?
If, do we have Mr. Ferantino's, is he available, like, at the executive session?
Can you answer our questions?
I don't think this warrants an executive session, it's just public discourse.
Okay, perfect, no worries.
Okay.
Thank you.
We don't need the executive session, then, we'll just talk about it at the work session.
Good thought, though.
Okay.
All right, so sevens move to work.
Sevens move to work. Eleven was removed. Okay. Any other alterations or deletions?
I make a motion to remove nineteen based on some new information that also, the people who go out and try to sell a county, if you will, for business purposes, free businesses to vote each PA, these people weren't even contacted or interacted with to get their feelings or thoughts on proposing something like this. So, until we do that, I feel better to be held.
And you want to?
Remove it.
Remove it completely from the voting session? Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, on a question about removing, take a roll call vote.
Yeah, just on the question about that, I mean, we spoke about it, it was in, it was on our committee meeting, that Mr. Sabatino had it, we talked about it last week, the work session, there were two weeks in between.
But we received new information since then.
I saw that, but then...
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Lescavage.
Mr. Haas, how would you feel if you were out there trying to promote the county and then this came to be without being discussed with yourself? I don't think you would appreciate that.
So, in light of the new information, that's why we're taking a vote to do this.
But I'm elected to promote the county, and that's why, you know, it's why we're here. I'm elected to promote the county, and that's what, why I've been sounding this trump for many months now.
Right.
So...
Is business your specialty?
Okay, so, at that, have the vote to remove it off the agenda.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage? Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. Lescavage? I already called you, you were a guest.
I'm sorry. Cause enough kinds of trouble up here.
Five and five, so it doesn't pass.
So, five yeses and five nos, so it failed to pass, so the motion stays on the agenda.
Correct.
Right, if the tally's correct, I think it is. Okay, so the motion stays on the agenda. Any other alterations or deletions?
Most to accept the agenda, Mr. Chair?
Well, before we go there, I have a motion to move number seventeen to number one, and vice versa, move number one to number seventeen, as per the county manager, Ramilla Crocamo's request.
Some move.
Second. We have a motion as a second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passed, so seventeen's moved to number one, and number one's moved to seventeen. Any other alterations or deletions?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We'll now open the floor to public comment on voting session agenda items. Now, keep in mind, item number eleven and item number seven are not on the voting session, so if your comments are regarding seven or eleven, they're not appropriate at this time because they're not being voted on. Any other comments are welcome on the voting items. Anybody? We have a couple slips here. We have a slip from Mr. Anthony Hall, who wanted a comment on the public hearing, which is already adjourned. Is there an Anthony Hall here? You wanted to comment on the public hearing, but that meeting's over? Is there another comment you wanted to make?
I wanted it to be heard.
Regarding what item? Okay, that's off the agenda, though, so you could speak on that during the work session?
During the work session.
It's coming up after the voting meeting. Yeah, it's at the, at the end of this voting meeting. Yeah, sure. Yep. Voting meeting, voting session. Mr. Conrad, it looks like you were going to speak on item number seven, correct? Which was moved off the voting session, you could speak at that, on that at the public speaking session at the end of the voting meeting. Okay? Let's see what else. Mr. Richard Wren?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you had a, want to speak on an agenda item on the voting session?
Same deal.
Oh, number seven? You were going to speak? Okay, you can speak on that a little bit later? Okay? And finally, here, Mr. Walter Griffith? Voting item?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Number nineteen.
Number nineteen?
I did have the other two, but I'll wait until after the voting session.
To talk on those as well?
Okay.
Okay. And I think there's a item, agenda nineteen is a letter from Mr. Lombardo as well, that probably has to be read into the record as well, just for the chair's information.
Yeah, he asked me to read that at the end of the...
I just wanted to remind you, in case you got, you missed. My issue on number nineteen is, I think the resolution is a fairly, the intent of the resolution, I get, I get the intent. The problem that I have is the wording in the resolution pretty much makes the whole resolution moot. I mean, what's the, what's the point of a resolution that says, at the end of the day, council gets to change whatever they want to do anyway? I mean, at the end, and at the very end of the resolution, after all the verbiage, it said that the warehousing logistics and a fee for 5,000, which I don't know, we still, we currently charge now as a per acre development fee for each of those categories, but it says, the last part of the resolution says, "Be it further resolved that this schedule shall be used as guidance for negotiating LERTA agreements going forward. Final terms for any LERTA request shall remain subject to approval by the council." What's the point of the resolution? If there's nothing in the resolution that makes it solid, why are we doing it? If we're, if we're not, if we're not strong enough as a council to say, "This is our resolution, this is the guidelines, that's what you have to negotiate," no negotiation once the person reads this. So, if the person reads this and says, "Huh, well, I'll just talk to the couple council members, I'll get enough votes, and I'll get that changed altogether, I'll make no LERTA, I'll get nothing until ninth year." They can do that according to this resolution, it means nothing. We need to be better at crafting resolutions. If we're going to do stuff like this, and the intent is to make sure that we have clear-cut guidelines for vendors or people that put items into council for approval, let's make it at least strong enough to be worthwhile. This is useless. If the council gets to override it, what's the point? As a guideline? Okay, let's make a guideline that says anything, it doesn't mean anything. So, my point is that, and it's all governed by the LERTA law anyway, and Mr. Lombardo's point is well taken, if it's going to discourage vendors and people from coming to the county, is that something we want to do? Or do we want to sit down and talk about, how can we make this whole resolution beneficial for everybody involved? I get Mr. Haas's complaint, and I agree with him 100%. The ability for us to give 100% LERTAs for a five-year term, I think, is not reasonable for the taxpayers, but I think we got to come to a common ground on this resolution idea of what is good for the taxpayers, as well as what's going to not stifle business from coming here. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Griffith. Do we have any other public comment here in the room? Any on the Zoom? Is there a Mark out there with their hand up on the Zoom?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo of Hazelton speaking, can you hear me?
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is, to piggyback or dovetail off of Controller Griffith on number nineteen on the voting agenda for the LERTA, I would like to add historical perspective from when Home Will began on the LERTA, because the first county council had a baseline for LERTA of 50% in the beginning. The first, the first council had a 50% LERTA for, as the baseline, but then, as the years went on, the successive councils and managers deviated from that and gave 100% LERTA somewhere along the lines of when the KOC program expired. In that event, the Office of Law, during the time of the deviation, said that if that were to occur, you know, to go from 50% to 100%, then that would establish a precedence moving forward for other developers, and then if the other developers weren't, weren't given the same opportunity or the same chance of getting, establishing that 100%, then that would open the county up to possible litigation. So, I just want to give that historical perspective, because I think, once, as I said for many years, a one-size-fits-all for the LERTA is a very, very reckless solution. I think that there's enough tools that the state gives in other programs that are in the toolbox for the county to do on a case-by-case basis, not to just give any random developer, "Hey, we'll give you 100% here," and, you know, kind of like the Oprah Winfrey effect. You get a car, you get a car, you get a car. I mean, it's reckless, and it's, it's a, it's harmful for taxpayers in the long run. And as far as number eighteen, Mr. Chairman, we talked about the Hotel Sterling in terms of the U-DAG money. I think that myself and Controller Griffith and others were proven correct that the U-DAG money should not have been given for the Hotel Sterling when the developer was unable to prove that they had all their financial, their finance, finances in order with respect to lended loans and other lending institutions. As you are, as you are aware, Mr. Chairman, that should have been established prior to the developers coming to council.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo.
And now they're transferring, so I think that this was a waste of time and exercising utility. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Are there any other out there looking to speak? Appears not. We'll close public comment right now. I have two statements to read, one from Chairman John Lombardo asked me to read this because he's out of town. No, no. Mr. Lombardo asked this to be read at the meeting tonight, it is regarding the LERTA schedule. County Council colleagues, I apologize for my absence this evening, but I could not let the LERTA schedule vote come to pass without once again stating my vehement opposition to it. This schedule, whether suggestive or mandated, is sending shockwaves all throughout the developer community in Pennsylvania and beyond. It is telling people that Luzerne County is a wrench in the work of economic progress. We have long been trying to shake the stigma that county councils stymies progress with its lassitude and lack of synergy, but it is obvious that there is still work to be done. First, this schedule is coming out of a committee that it does not belong in. The Infrastructure Committee should be discussing roads and bridges and county-owned buildings, not tax abatements. There is perhaps no less fitting of a committee for this type of legislation to pass through, besides maybe code review. I have been told that the reason that LERTAs have been going through committee is so they can be negotiated prior to coming to the full council. It is clear that this is futile because council members insist upon continuing to nickel-and-dime our potential economic partners at the voting session with surprise terms and vague adage language, even when they are members of the committee that negotiated the tax abatement. Also interesting is the fact that there is no mention of local labor in this legislation, when it seems to be a routine talking point in other discussions. I find the inconsistency glaring, sad, and telling of the true desires of council members, I will keep this in mind in the future. We have also heard from Mr. John Augustine of Penn's Northeast, who stated that it is negligent to make these decisions without all the proper information. We have taken the time to listen to stakeholders on other issues. Why are we not doing the same with other investments? The economic development community is coming to us... The economic development community is coming to us with a solution to three problems. One, bringing good-paying jobs to the county. Two, increasing the county's tax base. And three, reclaiming unusable mine scarred land. Unusable mine scarred land, which plagues the region. We should not be treating these people like lepers, when they are actually major assets. When developers come to us with these plans, they're often built on speculation, not specification. They may not know whether a warehouse, or a tech firm, or manufacturer is going to be the end user. In fact, that is most often the case. For example, many of the buildings in the Center Point Development of northern Luzerne County house multiple diverse companies, ranging from cabinet manufacturers, to food banks, to tech firms, to distribution centers, and even a trampoline park. Who has the crystal ball telling us what will occupy each of those buildings? Also present throughout the county is Amazon, who recently announced a $20 billion, would it be, investment in our area. Should we really punish their warehouses in Pittston, Hazelton, and Hanover Township while praising their tech hubs elsewhere? Maybe those incentives are the reason they are here, and why this type of legislation sends the wrong message. We have an historic opportunity in front of us right now to make lemonade out of lemons of our past. If this schedule were to be successful tonight, we would be putting that future at risk. We are sending messages that Luzerne County is anti-growth, anti-business, anti-jobs, anti-environment, and anti-progress. Those messages, like all that come from this room, resonate far beyond the walls of this building. Please do not support this legislation. Thank you. John Lombardo, Chairman Luzerne County Council. I also received, as the rest of you did around the table, a memo from John Augustine. He wanted this, done already? John Augustine of Penns Northeast, who regularly, routinely, as part of his career, deals with outside developers and trying to culture and cultivate these developers to come to Luzerne County. So his message is short. It reads, "Folks, it is my recommendation at council table to LERTA schedule discussion and convene a meeting, or at least a discussion, with economic development professionals and developers who can better educate and inform and guide the discussion with the goal of a positive outcome for a process going forward. I applaud council for wanting to create a process, but I don't believe that council currently has a good understanding of what is going on in the economic development world, not just in Luzerne County or Northeast PA, but also across multiple states and globally. To make decisions without proper information would be negligent. There's a great story to be told, and Luzerne County is currently in the crosshairs of a once-in-a-lifetime generational opportunity with family-sustaining jobs. Before there is any vote on a LERTA process going forward, I would wish the county and council would listen to the economic development community. Thank you for your time." John Augustine of Penns Northeast. Okay. So with that, we'll move on to the agenda items. We have a motion to approve the minutes of May 27, 2025 voting session.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. Okay. Item number one was moved to seventeen. Number seventeen was moved to number one. And number seventeen, which is now number one, reads, "An introduction of an ordinance adopting the 2026 Long Range Operational Fiscal and Capital Plan for Luzerne County." I think Ms. Rozell-
Thank you.
And Mr. Vog, were going to comment? What was that? Oh.
Yes, and thank you. I'm on Zoom. I'm here in Harrisburg-
Oh, okay.
-for a dinner honoring the 2025 Governor's Awards for Environmental Excellence. And I'm here with Beth Donardi, who is a staff member here in Luzerne County. And the Governor's Awards for Environmental Excellence, she is one of the award winners. Luzerne County is one of the award winners. So I, I'm here in Harrisburg, but I do want to introduce the capital plan. And Mary Rozell and Nick Vog will offer particulars, but I absolutely want to commend Beth Donardi. She is an award winner here in the state that highlights the best, the best, the best in environmental innovation and expertise throughout the Commonwealth. And Beth Donardi from Luzerne County is an award recipient tonight. So it's my honor, not only to be here with her, but also to introduce the capital plan. And I will turn the microphone over to Mary Rozell and Nick Vog. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Crockermo. I echo all those comments. Beth Donardi's done an amazing, absolutely amazing job with that operations building. It's on Wyoming Ave at our county airport. Anybody, you should go over and look at that building. It's amazing what was done, and it's a gorgeous, gorgeous building now. Thank you, Manager Crockermo.
Thank you.
Mr. Vog.
Good evening. Good evening. So the capital plan, we have some amendments. So the new total going from 2025 to 2027 is roughly 4.9 million in capital improvements. 2025, we have just under 700,000. 2026, 3.1 million. And 2027, 1.125 million. Some adjustments were made. What was taken at the security entrance for the courthouse here? We need more time to game plan that one, since this is a historic building. What was adjusted? The security entrance for the prison was adjusted from 1 million to 350,000 with a new estimate that we received. The budget and finance outfit, that was, the facade part of that portion of the project was taken out, and we adjusted down just for the outfit and water damage to the budget and finance suite. AEDs went from $150,000 to $75,000. We got new pricing and a number of units for that, finally. And then what was added in? The assessor software. Mary, if you can explain that one?
Sure, no problem. So we talked about that previously when you signed the agreement for the new assessor software. The software won't be supported again after this year, so we have to do, we have to do the upgrade. We have no choice. It's $100,000 this year, and then $550,000 for '26, and then $550,000 for '27. So that's all put into the capital plan.
Then other additions are vent cleaning for several buildings. We've had reports of black soot and dirt coming out of the vents. So this is a health and safety-for-employees-type-deal. The boiler roof replacement, lots of leaks in the boiler room, so we have to get that figured out. The prison camera upgrades, the new judge courtroom and chambers, and then an emergency building repair line. And then we also have the road and bridge garages, HVAC. We have three garages that are without heat right now and/or on dire need of new equipment. So, any questions?
Any questions from council? If not, the ordinance is automatically introduced by the county manager, and thank you.
And if there's any questions, you can contact me directly.
Email, right? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Or Mary.
Okay. Item number two. Motion to adopt ordinance amending the 2025 fiscal year budget to utilize $56,875 from the reserve fund for the strategic plan and five-year financial plan.
So moved.
On a question? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Items number three and four, I think Mr. Vog will be at the podium to answer any questions. But right now, we need a motion. Item number three, a motion to adopt resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with Northeast Energy Advisors.
So moved.
Motion is second. On a question?
On the question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I know we had a ordeal a couple of months ago before Christmas where there was some ambiguity if we RFP'd it out. Was this RFP'd out?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And what is the cost to the county?
Zero.
And how do we get to zero?
Well, if there's any cost, there's no cost to the county. No money will be going to the third-party supplier. If, if the supplier gets any, if the third-party consultant gets any money, it will come from the energy providers themselves.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, if I could, Mr. Chair. Yeah, when, when you do this, when residents engage in shopping for their electricity too, it's the same thing commercially. So it is that we're still paying a percentage, because the percentage goes to the broker, right, Mr. Vog, even though it's for commercial energy? So my big concern was, and I talked to somebody, one of the higher-ups at PP&amp;L, why do we need a broker in the first place? Because, you know, you can save an awful lot of money. I think it was like $40,000 in the last, in the last perspective, whoever the last broker was going to be. But I'm going to support it, just because I think it's better than the last process we had. But I think it's something to go for next year, if we could really consider perhaps shopping for our own energy. I think we could pass the savings down to the taxpayers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Haas. Any other questions? Mr. Lescavage.
Is there any rates associated with this, for gas or electric?
The only rate is 0.02.
Hour.
0.0.
But if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Haas.
So they have a brokerage fee, but I think the county could capture that fee and use it for ourselves. And there is a tier based on the volume of energy you use. There's different tiers commercially. And I think in some cases, I could see using a broker, but that, that's just never explained to us. I think this council, going forward, needs to have a full understanding of what the process is. The packet here is about 100 pages. It's about certificates and things like that, which are really nice. I trust these people to a good job. But again, the contention is that, why don't we do that? Again, I just, I would just like to examine all these different options. Maybe we can remand to Mr. Sabatino's committee again. And that was sarcastic.
Okay. Any other question? If not, can we have a roll call vote? Ms. Lawrence.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
I guess one no passes.
Item number four. Motion to adopt resolution designating an agent to execute all required forms and documents for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act.
So moved.
Motion is second. On a question? Ms. Lawrence, roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five. Motion to adopt a resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project, the Geisinger Clinic.
So moved.
Second.
On a question? Ms. Lawrence, roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six. Motion to adopt resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project, Miceline's Mission.
So moved. Second.
On a question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Number seven, we delete it? Or we moved it? We moved it. We didn't delete it. We moved it to the work session. I stand corrected. Number eight. Motion to adopt a resolution requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority. So moved.
Second.
On a question? On the question? Yes, sir.
Mr. Vog, I have a couple of questions about this. Thank you so much. And as you do, I just want to commend you, first of all, because the township supervisors in Franklin are real excited about this. Orange Road is terrible. It's terrible. We got comments about that all the time. So just two things. What is the exact timeline again? I don't think I asked this last week. What's the timeline? And will this be a total rehab of the road?
It's a total rehab. 2.3 miles, full-dep reclamation. It kind of depends on when the grant is accepted and approved. Once that happens, it's probably six months to a year to get it started and going. So we're probably looking 2027. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other question? Roll call vote, please, Ms. Lawrence, number eight.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number nine. Motion to introduce ordinance authorizing the Secretary of Transportation to acquire right-of-way necessary for the Water Street Bridge project.
So moved. Second.
All right. Hold on. No. No, we're doing it with the vote, right?
Right.
Who was first? Because everybody spoke on-
It was Mr. Lescavage and then over here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Mr. Wilovich.
Or Mr. Sabatino?
Split at 50% each?
Yeah.
On the question? There is none. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Smith?
A thousand times yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Luskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
And Mr. Thornton?
That bridge has been closed since summer of twenty-one. I vote yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number ten, motion to adopt resolution authorizing the submission of a growing greener plus grants program application to the Department of Environmental Protection.
So moved.
Second.
I think Mr. Wilovich had that one. Second. Uh, on the question.
This is, I'm sorry, just-
Ms. McDermott?
When I was reading through, it said it was only for the application. So, if we get the plan, doesn't mean that we have to move forward with it? I don't know if anybody knows that.
I don't know. Mr. Skeen, do you know that?
We would talk if we apply for it and we get it.
We normally do use it.
Just because it's a stormwater management, how is that different than the stormwater management that we already have? Uh, wondering if that-
I believe it's-
Mr. Reese, Mr. Reese had to put, oh, who's up there, Ms. Parich?
Yes. Yes, I, I was just gonna say, it would be to update the stormwater management plan that we have, I believe. And Mr. Reese can correct me, but I think our plan has not been updated since two thousand and ten.
That's correct. And it's supposed to be updated every five years.
I know, it was a while.
It's updated, so now we're starting to know.
And then it does say in municipalities, does that require them to pay any fee? Or, like, if this is updated, will they have to invest any money or do anything?
They'll have to update, they'll have to adopt, uh-
The plan.
So, this is going for phase one. I don't know.
It's on, now it's on. Um, so yeah, so this is only going for phase one, which is just identifying the scope of the plan, uh, and creating the plan advisory committee to move forward with it. And then phase two is creating the plan and then creating the ordinance, the model ordinance for the county and for all the seventy-six municipalities to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, with, um, only some of the municipalities pay money into, um, WVSA, right?
That's a separate, that's totally separate.
That's separate?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, any other questions for Mr. Reese? Oh, okay, roll call vote, please, number ten.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Luskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, number eleven, we removed, correct? And move on to number twelve, motion to adopt resolution amending Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one forty-three, which approved the use of opioid settlement funds to fund the medication-assisted treatment program at the Loser County Correctional Facility for twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. On the question. Um, why, my, my question is, uh, we're approving the use of the funds for twenty twenty-three?
That was my question, too.
Is that correct?
It's, it's my understanding that this is-
Uh, go ahead, Ms. Stone.
So, for twenty twenty-three, there was a little bit, well, I was over the nine two thousand five hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents over what was actually in the, in the medical assistance. So, deobligating the nine two thousand five hundred and five cents.
So, that money's coming back?
Sure.
But we have to use it for the same purpose, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that? No? Okay, roll call vote, please, number twelve.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Luskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number thirteen, motion to adopt resolution amending Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-two, which approved the use of opioid settlement proceeds to fund the medication-assisted treatment program at the Loser County Correctional Facility.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. Roll call vote, thirteen? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Stone. Okay, Mr. Sabatino?
I was gonna say, is this the one to re-obligate the money?
No, this is the, um, the first amendment, the sublocade within the resolution, but it's actually long-lasting injectables, because there are three different types of injectables. The first is used, so it's-
That's fine. So, this is modifying the twenty twenty-four resolution to take out sublocade and use long, long-lasting injectable for the three different kinds for medical assistance treatment.
Let's see.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Stone? Nope, roll call vote, please, number thirteen.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Luskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Item fifteen, motion to adopt resolution approving the allocation of opioid settlement proceeds to Loser and Wyoming Counties Drug and Alcohol Department in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
So moved. Second.
On the question. Roll call vote.
Mr. Luskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Number sixteen, motion to adopt resolution approving the allocation of opioid settlement
proceeds to Loser and Wyoming Counties Drug and Alcohol Department in the amount of five hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Question? Roll call vote.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Luskavage?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, item number seventeen was moved to number one. We voted on that already. Number one was moved to seventeen, so go back and read that one, which is, which appears as number one on our, our list. A motion to adopt ordinance amending the Loser County zoning map to rezone one parcel of property totaling zero point four nine acres in Newport Township from in the non-developable, uh, district zone to R two, two-family residence district zone.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. On the question. Roll call vote.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Luskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number eighteen, motion to adopt resolution rescinding Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, thereby deobligating funds previously allocated to H and N Investments LLC related to redevelopment of the former Hotel Sterling site.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. On the question. I just, a quick question, I think, uh, my memory, I'm trying to remember, was that three million dollars? Is that what it was? So, we're deobligating to three million. Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions?
We're only deobligating it to-
It's just coming back to the U-DAG fund.
The U-DAG fund.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that it doesn't, we still have no guidance on whether or not, uh-
No.
The particular requirements that came attached to the funds and the funds that we've already spent from those, that monies are released.
The state never clarified that.
Right.
No. Okay, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Skeen?
There was an executive session where Jack Dean explained his memo to all members of council.
That's right.
That is federal, not state.
That's right, I remember that. Thank you, Mr. Skeen. Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Luskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Number nineteen, motion to adopt resolution establishing a standardized fee and abatement schedule for future LERTA requests.
So moved. Second.
Second, Ms. Kraschnowski, on the question. I, uh, I haven't made any comments tonight on it. I do have a few comments to make, um, as follows. Regarding the LERTA program in general, uh, there's two misconceptions, I think, surrounding LERTAs in this room and outside this room. Number one, LERTAs are not granted on pristine and prime land. They're granted under the state LERTA law on compromised land. It's land that's poison, toxic, uh, undevelopable. Uh, and a lot of people get that wrong. They think we're giving away tax, uh, breaks to corporations and develop, developers that are, that are coming here to develop on nice, developable land. And that's just not true. That's the first misconception. Second one misconception, I hear this all the time, the developer will come here anyway, so we do not need a grant of LERTA. Well, simply not true. Again, as evidenced, uh, we have seventy-five years, seventy to seventy-five years of contaminated coal land all over this county. You all know where it is, you've all seen it. Uh, there's a reason why it sat there for seventy-five years, since mining operations stopped in nineteen fifty. No one wants to develop it. Why not? It costs too much. A developer will refuse to dole out a million or two million dollars of his own money upfront to develop or to reclaim that land. That's what the LERT is for. It's for land that's otherwise not developable. So, I just wanted to clear that up. Uh, it's too bad Mr. Lombardo isn't here. Uh, he speaks extensively on this subject with me, and he'll always bring up the example where he lives, Pittston Township. Pittston Township hasn't raised taxes on their residents in many, many years. The school board of Pittston area doesn't raise taxes on their constituents in Pittston area school district for a long time. The reason is, years ago, they had the foresight to, uh, implement and, and deploy the KOZ program, which is similar to LERTA, but that's, that's long gone now. And the KOZ program, which gave tax abatements to corporations coming in to develop, eventually they came to maturity, and now those corporations are paying mega, mega taxes to Pittston Township. So, Pittston Township's in a position, they, they hardly ever, never may have to raise taxes on their people. That's something we have to think of when we're taking any, uh, votes here or measures to thwart LERTAs or, or diminish, uh, the capacity with which they can help development. Uh, the end result of LERTAs, I think, uh, of this, if it passes, will be a job-killing measure. We're, we're turning away progress, economic growth, potentially. Uh, we're not gonna know the effects of it probably forever, because when, when developers come from North Carolina or Colorado, and they just see that we passed, or they'll see it next year or the year after, a LERTA schedule, and they say, well, ten miles north of there, or ten miles south of the county, Carbon County School Kill, they're close to Route eighty, eighty-one, Turnpike, three oh nine, why don't we just go there? They won't even come tell us that they, they're not even looking at our county. They're just gonna go elsewhere, and we lose that. And then we lose that, millions of dollars of revenue forever. Can't get it back. We won't even know about it. Uh, so, every time a developer does that, we are foregoing millions of dollars in future tax revenues, without a doubt. And if the land stays mine scarred, stays like that for the next twenty, thirty, forty years, so be it. We collect pennies, pennies on the dollar, and, uh, we'll always collect pennies on the dollar. Finally, my last comment is, when we take steps like this, when we pass a business thwarting developer, uh, from coming here, or thwarting his efforts, we are foregoing those millions of dollars down the road. When it comes time for budgets two, three, four years from now, five years from now, county council was ever sitting here, is gonna have to make the hard decision, maybe to raise taxes on the county people. And me, I don't like raising taxes on the moms and pops of Loser County. The widows, the widowers, the row homes in Hazelton City, Wilkes-Barre City, Pittston City, Nanticoke City. I would rather get those taxes from big business, from the developers, from the corporate world. I'd rather take their taxes than me having to go to the common people of this county and tax them to make our budget work. And, uh, I just think that we're doing damage and harming, uh, to the whole county if we discourage and turn away these potential developers. That's my comment. I don't know if there's any other comments on the subject. If so, hear them now. Yes, Mr. Hoss?
Thornton, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the debate. And some of what you said, I definitely agree with. I really do. I came back to council last year. Um, on, one of my major reasons for running was because in the two-year hiatus that I, I was off, I saw these LERTAs that were given. They were essentially KOZs. They were a hundred percent abatement in some cases. Hazelton City came and they asked, I'm sorry, a developer came for a property down in Hazelton area, and they actually gave the city a different version than they presented to the county. I don't know if y'all remember this. And I said, well, why can't you just give us the same deal that you gave Hazelton City? Well, this is what you used on the last LERTA handout that you gave. You didn't say handout, that's my word, not, not this gentleman's, but that was a different LERTA package. We're just asking you to give us the same LERTA package as you gave to the former site. But I replied, you're giving a different deal to us, Loser County, than you are Hazelton City. And they didn't answer my question. I found that, I found that extremely frustrating because that was not done in good faith. It just wasn't. This council ended up passing that anyway, and, um, we did it only after a few of us said, well, how about if you give us the same deal, then we'll pass it. They eventually came around and said, yeah, we'll do that. What this document does, and I'm proud of what Mr. Sabatino's leadership was in that committee, I don't care which committee it went through, it, we're moving the ball in the right direction. I would've put on code committee, but we've got a government study commission going now that's upending a lot of our codes, and it's kind of moot until that study commission goes through to have a code committee, because they're changing things for the next cycle, if the voters choose that. But for something like this, the, this schedule is not just something arbitrary, it's not something to throw out there and, and break the last dime out of a developer. This is as much for management as for potential developers. The management wanted us to have some parameters to negotiate, and that's what this offers. It offers parameters. It doesn't say, we'll take anything that you throw at us, like this council certainly has done last cycle. They did, and some of you were on the board at that time. It's not right. Council needs to be driving the bus. If the business committee wants to come and present their best case, that's why we have public sessions, to do that. Um, we, we got a, a, a letter from, an email from
Please understand.
I know, and the gentleman's not here, but it's not sending a shockwave through the development community. If you haven't noticed, a lot of our homegrown developers are not investing in Luzerne County. They're not. This downtown project is done by out-of-town, out-of-country developers that's going to fall through, despite the incentive that we have. So this is not driving away business. National companies see the opportunities that are here. That's a big reason why we have the Amazon Center, $20 billion, coming to sale and township. And it's not just because of LERTA. It's because of the power plant, the power plants right there. They're going to be able to ship energy to the site at bust. It's right there. What these LERTAs do, they certainly do like Mr. Thorin said, they help out mine-scarred land, but that has not always been the case. What these are is a way to get a little extra profit out. I don't know why we can't properly negotiate these things, whereas the county doesn't have to sign onto the LERTA because the schools are the ones, and Mr. Lombardo's point is saying this too, they are the ones that charge a lot of taxes. So if the school wants to do that, and the township, or the borough, or the city wants to have it, go be it. But we represent everybody in Luzerne County, and it's not fair to the county taxpayers at large to just say, "Okay, well, you're giving the locality a different break, but we'll take one on the chin for the whole county taxpayers." It's not right. It's not right at all. And so again, this is not binding. This gives parameters. So if somebody's really serious about investing in this type of property, they're going to come and they're going to put forth their best project. So the whole council will have to negotiate with the manager. So I'm just looking at anything else that was said here. But this is the middle ground. And somebody from the audience said, "Yeah, it's not binding, it has no teeth." But the other side, it's going to drive business away. Well, which is it? Is it going to drive business away or isn't it having enough teeth? Clearly, it's some kind of middle ground. That I think what we've done here on the committee, and hopefully this council will approve, it gives us the middle ground. It gives us the posture to say, "Look, we're not going to have, we want your development, we want to encourage business here, but we don't want to do it at the expense of something loosey-goosey or at the expense of taxpayers at large." Because ultimately, these LERTAs put the fingers on the scale for businesses that don't ascribe and can't get a LERTA. I believe in free enterprise. I'm a free enterprise guy. I'm very consistent with this. I always said this was inconsistent. I was that with big labor, I was that with big business.
Okay.
All right? We're here for the whole taxpayer at large. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Lescavage.
I think I said this two weeks ago, and I'm going to say it again tonight. This whole thing, and I do agree with Walter on this, does nothing. And we beat it for 45 minutes last time, we're beating it again, and we're accomplishing nothing. We had one just recently for Wawa, an Exeter. I give them a lot of credit because they just put a new sheet a mile down the road in Wyoming. But who am I to say they shouldn't put a Wawa there? Let them put one there. They paid tax dollars. What do I care? The thing is, it's called free enterprise. So we should allow people to put whatever they want, not dictate what type of warehouse, what business. I think that's what happens, everything all levels out. And I'll go back to the arena when we watched that 25-year video, arena no, arena yes, but when you looked at that property, prior to all of that development, it looked like hell. It was pretty sorry-looking. When you saw those before pictures, and now the after, what's up on that hill? With the exception of the mall, because we all know malls kind of went south with different kind of storefronts. But with that being said, I think water seeks its own level. It'll take care of itself. But I think we don't need to be involved in this to that extent. Plus the fact that five years from now, eight years from now, there could be somebody sitting here replacing all of us that say, "You know what? We're going to give them zero for 20 years." I mean, at that point, there's nothing we could do. It's up to the individuals to have faith in the business and the opportunities that come before us, and try to make the best of it for the people. And I think by approving these things and getting money on the books, we keep taxes low, and that's, I think, the end game here. Because if, like you said, if they don't come here, they're going to go somewhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Lescavage. Ms. Stevenson?
I wanted to say that I do agree with some of Councilman Haas's statements. I think that this abatement schedule is the middle ground. I do believe that Controller Griff makes some valid points, but I do think it meets the requirements necessary to gauge who's coming in and out of the county. I do believe the language that Chairman Lombardo uses is very divisive. Right? We cannot sit on council and operate in fear and then be at one end of the spectrum. We can't say, "Oh, this is going to completely remove everyone from coming to Luzerne County to bring business." Business will always come to Luzerne County. There's 330-plus individuals who live here who will need to be supported here and will work here. So I don't think that that language is appropriate. I think that the LERTA schedule allows us to put that information into the universe, to draw people in with intention. The goal was intention. Right? Luzerne County needs a lot of things. We need jobs, we need housing, right? And we need to be able to use this land appropriately. There is not enough land in Luzerne County for everybody. Right? And land will run out eventually. Am I wrong? So I think being intentional about what we put in these spaces and having something like this abatement schedule helps narrow that scope.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Anybody else? Mr. Sabatino?
One of the things that I heard tonight was, things are being built on spec, which is speculation. The purpose of this is to bring less speculation and more, as Ms. Stevenson said, intentionality into what we're doing as council and what we are attracting to our county for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Mr. Chair, not to be redundant, go over, hash the things out for the last, I guess, eight years I've been going through. I've been supporting LERTAs. I think we've come a long way. Just look at the last ones we approved. I mean, they're great. And I think down the line, we'll continue in that way. I just have a hard time putting this down in paper. I just cannot support that. And I agree a lot with Mr. Thornton and our chairman said, and I just cannot support this. I just don't think we're moving in the right direction. I think Mr. Augustine had some great points. We never even brought them in to give us some ideas. They're the organizations that bring industry into us, and we just kind of like, hurry up, let's get this through. And why couldn't we invite them at a work session? You know? So they're the leaders. They're the ones that are bringing everything to us. And I really think that we're continually doing a great job, and we just don't need to put this down on paper. I think it's just going to not do well with us. We could do the same thing and not have a resolution. Who said we have to have this piece of paper? We could negotiate everything anyway. Why do we have to write it down? Even though, like the controller said, it's meaningless, it's there, it's on paper. And sometimes, and Mr. Thornton had a great line last work session, "We don't know what we don't know." We don't know who's not going to come here, and we'll never know that. So I just can't support it.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Smith?
One of the things I think no one is really applying here is that there, we're trying to walk a fine line. We're trying to walk a line between inviting business and making sure that we're friendly for business, but also telling our taxpayers that we care about them and want to make sure that our businesses pay a fair amount of taxes. There is a space, certainly, for government to help and encourage economic development. I think that this was well determined and well thought out, and I didn't vote to take it off of the session because I wanted to have this conversation. I think this is important. It's amazing to me, Councilman Haas mentioned earlier, that, well, it either has no teeth or it's going to thwart business. And the problem that no one's really talking about is that words matter. Leadership matters. That's why we're talking about this for so many, for so long, because words matter, and what we put and what we codify matters. So I would like to see input from the organizations that we heard from this week. Would I have preferred to hear from them earlier? That would have been great. So maybe we take this off of the voting session now, that we've been able to discuss it and really get some points out there and talk to that organization again. I know that this has been worked on for a lot, but I think this means a lot. I think this is very important.
I tend to agree with you, Ms. Smith.
Oh, my God, I never thought you'd say that in your whole life.
Yeah, I know. I also didn't think I'd hear this. No.
It's amazing.
No, but in light of Penn's Northeast and the comments of Mr. Augustine, when he said, "We have no idea what's going on around the state and globally beyond the state," and he would love to share that with us, we could consider bringing him in to speak here publicly in front of everybody. He may open our eyes, and we may say, "Whoa, really." So we could actually entertain a motion to table this, right? Mr. Haas or Mr. Skeen?
Oh, oh. The T is hot.
Well, you have similar first names. I'm sorry.
We do have similar first names.
So could, if we introduce, we could at this point introduce a motion to table, right?
We certainly could. You could introduce a motion to table, but then you want to put it on a work session. So whenever you were going to schedule, you want to put it on a work session, but you have to take it off to put it on the work session. So...
So it has to be removed from the voting session?
You could remove it. Didn't we vote on this before to have it removed, and it didn't pass?
Yeah, we already...
Because we wanted to have it.
So we could make a motion to table it, but not have another work session, and then put on the next voting session two weeks from now, but have the speakers come in and speak to us.
Well, not on the voting session.
Yes.
I would say that those two experiences should definitely be separate. We should definitely have Mr. Augustine come in and elaborate.
Right.
I would love to hear that, but I do not think that it should be voted on in the same session.
Right.
Right. I think you're trying to figure out a way to get that to happen.
You could table it, and then you could have another voting session, another work session on it, and then after that, untable it on a voting session.
Okay. So could I just...
So can I finish what I was going to say?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Smith.
I do agree with Councilwoman Stevenson. I don't appreciate Chair Lombardo's fear-mongering language, and I think incendiary language, frankly. This was done incredibly intentionally. It's our job to protect Luzerne County, it's our job to promote it. We've been voted into these positions to do just that, and I think Councilman Sabatino and his committee did an excellent job starting this discussion, and I hope that they're not disappointed because I think this is a long discussion. But I think this is a really, really good start because it's important. So I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, motion to table?
Second.
Second by Ms. Stevenson.
On the question.
On the question to table.
If we table...
Well, there's no discussion on the table, though. I'm sorry, the rules.
Well, is the question on the table vote, or is the question on the procedure?
On the table vote.
Not the procedure?
Well, point of order.
Right.
If we table this, are we not allowed to talk about it in a work session until we untable it?
Yeah.
We won't be able to vote on it again. No, you won't be able to vote on it again until you untable it.
So we can freely put it on a work session while it's on the table?
Right.
That's right.
Right, okay.
Thanks, Mr. Perry.
All right. So we have a motion to table, we have a second by Ms. Stevenson, and I guess we'll take the roll call vote.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Unanimous.
And I thank everybody. I know it's a long meeting, a long discussion, but it is healthy, robust discussion, which is why we're elected to sit here and present all points of view. So thank you for the nice discussion. That motion passed. At this point, we will move to public comment on any items, right? Well, we have four slips. Let me call on these first. Anthony Hall?
He's just wanted to go to the bathroom.
We'll hold his aside. Jeffrey Conrad? Go to the podium, please. Walter, is the mic on there?
Yeah, mic.
Mr. Conrad, you're from Nanticoke, correct?
Yes, sir. On the item number seven, this is common sense. I mean, most of the country has already started doing this. It's already begun in Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania has the third-largest number of veterans in the country, second only to California and Texas. 19,000 reside here in Luzerne County. I myself am 100%. I am tax-exempt. My father, who spent 10 years serving this country, is not. Why? We have almost the same disabilities, almost the same injuries. Why? I'd also like to say, can anybody, any of these gentlemen, can you tell me which one of us served during time of war and which didn't? And ladies, sorry.
All right, please, keep your comments, and I'll direct it to council.
Yes. You can't tell me. And I would also like to say that during time of war is a ridiculous statement because when we are not in some sort of conflict, some sort of combat action. We didn't determine the Korean War, Vietnam War, to be a war until years afterwards. That's why they spent 50 years trying to get Agent Orange benefits. You know, so I'm up here now, I already have the benefit, and I'm grateful to it. It saved my house. Me and my family almost became homeless because we couldn't afford it anymore. You know, there's a good chance everyone served a 22 a day. This could stop one of those 22 because financial reasons mixed with PTSD and all kinds of other things are what cause those 22 a day. It's not just lack of care, lack of mental health, it's the day-to-day struggle with financial responsibilities mixed with all that stuff. I would say, in closing, that this isn't a vote on just money, this is a vote on patriotism, this is a vote on integrity. Integrity of the county, the council members, your own personal look inside. Each one of you has a veteran in your family. Vote on behalf of them, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair, and just to follow up on that, I believe from talking to council members that pretty much everybody's in favor of granting the 100% tax exemption. We're just trying to clarify it with the state laws that seem to be a little bit, I don't know, conflicting with what we were going to pass. So I think in the future, near future, it's going to be clarified and sorted out, and I don't see a problem with it. That's my opinion. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Richard Wren. You're from Wilkes-Barre?
Wilkes-Barre, yes, sir. My name is Richard Wren. I formerly was a Disabled Veterans Representative for the State of Pennsylvania. I was the Luzerne County Director of Veterans Affairs. I'm also, was the Director of the Veteran Multi-Care Alliance, and I presently sit on the Gino Merle Board appointed by Governor Shapiro. I've done these tax exemptions, hundreds of them. The thing that I'm here to do is try to clarify some questions that you have. First off, let's go over it really quick. It's 100% disabled veteran who served during the period of a war, okay? They're eligible. The requirement is not, was he in a war zone? The requirement is during the period of a war. The veteran could have been stateside for the entire war. During Vietnam, that's a war era, he could have never left the United States and still falls under the period of war. Okay? So they only have, must have been in the military during a period of war. Now, the Pennsylvania Office of Veteran Affairs, under the PA Adjutant General's office, General Pippi, monitors this program, approves this program, reviews this program, every application. If they say no, this young lady down here can't do nothing. They have to say yes. It's reviewed every five years by this office. They have people down there, that's all they do. Okay? Now, you have a multitude of counties that have already approved this. Lackawanna County, which borders us, Erie County, Pike County, Tioga County, others are considering this resolution. They have already filed paperwork under their resolutions, which were approved by the Adjutant General's office. So I don't understand the question of legality. All you got to do, call Lackawanna County and say, "Are you doing this?" "Yeah, we're doing it." Well, they couldn't do it if it was illegal. Okay? Now, another point. Pennsylvania is one of the only states in the United States that still has this war clause, we call it. Why? I talked to Senator Baker, Senator D. Check, this has been going on for about 12, 14 years. Keep going around and around and around. People say, "Why? Everybody wants it off the books." Why? In their infinite wisdom, and this is a fact, and you could check this with your senators and your House people, it's placed on the Constitution of Pennsylvania. So they have to rewrite the Constitution of Pennsylvania in order to allow that. They ain't no big hurry to do that. It's a lot of work. And if you talk to all of these people, they will tell you the same thing. How come it's still on the books? They don't want to rewrite the Constitution. It's too much work. Now, they've done it for other things, but for some reason, not this. Now, I'm going to give you a Senate bill.
Well, thank you, that's three minutes.
Let me give you real quick now. Senate Bill 578, House Bill 1953, which are on there to approve this. And in closing, I'd just like to say one thing. All the money that your Veterans Affairs Office gives to his, gets for his veterans are federal dollars spent in this county.
Thanks.
It's a seven-to-one ratio. For every federal dollar in here, the economic impact in your county is seven.
And there'll be another three minutes for you to speak later, if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Do we have Mr. Anthony Hall here? Mr. Hall, you live in Wilkes-Barre?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I do. I just moved here from Columbus, Georgia. I was here for the last meeting, and when I moved from Columbus, Georgia, I was tax-exempt. They told me when I moved here, I would be tax-exempt. So I moved here. My mortgage went up from 1,600 to 2,200, you know? I want to show you guys something. When I was in the service, when I was, look at this. I was there to amputate this leg. The bone came out the side of my leg. Also, I messed up my back. Back in the day, I don't know if you guys know or remember, where they put your head and stuff, and you have your traction because you messed your back up or something like that. I was in the hospital a year, a year. They was going to amputate this leg. I had a cast on this leg for almost nine months. You understand? When I got out the hospital, I couldn't work, I couldn't nut, they gave me a medical discharge. All my life, I've been fighting. I've been fighting, trying to work. I worked at the VA Hospital in East Orange, New Jersey, carrying patients from there to Wilkes-Barre, VA. I love this town. A lot of people that I brought here, I talked to them, and they tell me so much about the town, you know? So when I moved from Columbus, Georgia, and I was coming back because I have six daughters, and they want me to come home because I'm too old to live down there by myself. So I moved here, knowing that when I was working at the VA, that this would be a good town to live in. So I come here, and I get tax exempt. After all those years of going through the traction, they put a rod in my back, messing around in planes, jumping out, busting your butt, you know? Listen, I don't know what you got. My son got killed in 2007, he joined the military, you know? I don't know what else to tell you people, you know? You guys sit here, I know it's late, y'all wouldn't looking at your watches, y'all want to go home, but trust me, I'm about to lose my house. I'm on a fixed income, you understand? When they told me I could move here, this is where my mortgage would be, and then when I get here, I get rejected? It's not right. And one more thing I'm going to leave with you guys, we are still at war. In August of 1990, you ever heard of the Gulf War? The Gulf War, you ever heard of it? It's still going on. Do you know that? And that's legal right now. As far as I'm concerned, I was in the service during the war. And anybody that joined from 1990 till now, it's, it's the same thing. And that's paperwork, that's facts. So if you tell me if I couldn't, if I wasn't under the war, or whatever it was, from 1990, I went from the service from 1998, no, 97, till present, I was still in the Army when there was a war going on. Look at your, look at your records. The Gulf War, August 1990, and till present, we're still at war. Am I right? You guys know about that? Do anybody know about that? Can I get a hand, people ahead? Can I get a raised hand, people that know that? I got one, two, so y'all all know that. So that's telling you, we're still at war. So when I joined the military, I was at war.
Mr. Hall, thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Thank you for your service, too. Next up, we have Mr. Walter Griffin.
Okay, I have a couple of comments that were not on the agenda under Agenda Number Seven, that was taken off the agenda, that was dealing with the veterans. But I want to jump over to Agenda Number 11, which was the least for the ADP, or JDP. The question I have with that is, I think we miss a lot of the opportunities for the Real Estate Committee to do more due diligence for the council and do a little bit of a history work. Same with the LERTA. I think there should be better requirements to make sure some of these things go to the Real Estate Committee. That stuff could be negotiated by committee, and that would solve a lot of these issues. But I'm going to go back to Agenda Number Seven, because I sent a letter, and I wanted to say to my good friend, Mr. Wren, who's a very good friend of mine, as well as all the other veterans that are here, this isn't, this isn't something that anybody wants to not give the veterans. We're governed by certain laws of the county and of the state, and the Constitution is pretty clear, and I know Mr. Wren talked about a period of war, but it doesn't say that in the Constitution. And I agree with him 100% that this has been going through the Senate and the House for years. They won't take the initiative to fix the problem. So we shouldn't be allowed to violate the Pennsylvania Constitution because the Senate and the House doesn't want to do their job. My concern is veterans here that are deserving of this benefit, and our hands are pretty much tied because we have a Constitution that says we can't do that in the state. Let the legislature fix that so it takes our hands off, and we don't have to worry about getting a problem where we're violating the Pennsylvania State Constitution in order to give these veterans, who truly deserve this benefit by the county, we can't give it to them. Because the Constitution says we can't. Now, the Veterans Affairs Office in Harrisburg told me explicitly, they approved the applications just like Mr. Wren said. That's true, they do. But if they come back and they say the person's not eligible because he didn't serve in a war of conflict, which is the dates are all, who are we to circumvent that? And are we going to be allowed to do that for county, school, and state? Because when the state does it, they do it for all three taxing bodies. If we're going to do it, are we going to do it just for the county? And then if they appeal, because they're not getting their school tax, because let's face it, school is the hardest one. Are we going to be involved in litigation now, much like the case law that we all received from the manager today? Are we going to be involved in case law to circumvent the fact that some veteran's going to appeal our ruling that said they only get county taxes when they could get school? And now we have litigation going on in the county for that purpose? I think we're standing on a situation here where the resolution needs to be to the state legislature, Lisa Baker needs to be called in, and, and our state representatives like Jamie Walsh and Alex Rigovich, and say, "Hey, why has this not been done? A constitutional amendment is a heavy lift. You got to get two houses to agree in two sessions. That's a heavy lift." But who in their right mind in the state legislature would vote against that, to put that constitutional amendment on the ballot? I don't understand how that would be a reality. So that's, that's the issue that I'm wrestling with, and I'm sure council is as well. It's not that we don't want to give it, we have a real, real wrestle, real factor here we have to worry about.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin, thank you.
Can I have three more minutes? Can I do that?
At the end of the meeting, the work session meeting, yeah. Not, not right now. Any other comments? We don't have any other slips. Anybody in the audience like to comment? And is anybody on the Zoom? We have a hand up. Looks like, is that Mr. Raybo on the Zoom?
You're correct, Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo of Hazleton speaking. Can you hear me? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Something you said during the voting session about the LERTAs that was, I found very profound, and I want to spotlight on that, Mr. Chairman, that you said that you don't want to see the burden, the tax burden of the people that live in the row homes of Hazleton City, Nanticoke City, Wilkes-Barre City, and Pittston City pay for the lion's share of the county taxes. I'm glad you said that. Because the thing, the truth of the matter is, when you have the LERTAs act as a K O Z, that's exactly what's happening. The burden is on those homeowners of the, of the four cities because the townships that are initiating the LERTAs as a K O Z are benefiting from the LERTAs. If you need factual proof of that, Mr. Chair, members of council, County Manager Croco-Mo, I would direct your attention to getting the copies of all the LERTAs and K O Zs since the inception of the LERTA and K O Zs. And you know where you can get that information from? The Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority, we have a running list of it. So, and I believe the former manager Pedri had a work session who spotlighted what was, what the benefits were from the LERTAs and the K O Zs throughout the years, like for each, during the expiration of each of those periods. So I think that would be beneficial in your discussion for the work session, just a food for thought. And going on to what you're going to discuss at the work session with regards to the U-DAG for Wilkes-Barre City sewer system, I don't understand why Wilkes-Barre City does not just transfer their sewer lines if they cannot find the money in their budget to maintain it. That is not an operation of the county taxpayers to fund for sewer line repairs and upgrades. That is a municipal function, even according to state law. So what I would recommend is Wilkes-Barre City use their CDBG money through, and also apply for, and Mr. Chair, you and Mr. Lescavich knows this program, Penn Vest, because I served on the Hazleton City Water Authority, and Penn Vest loans can be used for sewer line repairs and upgrades. So why doesn't Wilkes-Barre City apply for those funds through the state instead of using the U-DAG money, which should be used for county roads and bridges and capital projects that Manager Croco-Mo just introduced for the capital fund, for the capital projects in, to be used? I think that's a no-brainer, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. And just for the record, I believe we're not using U-DAG money, we're using interest off the U-DAG fund, just for the record. Thank you. Oh, community development interest, I think. Yeah, okay, not the, not the U-DAG account, we're not taking money from that, for the loan that we're going to discuss to Wilkes-Barre City. Is there anybody else with their hand up out there? Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Aye? Oppose? He already spoke, he had three minutes. Yeah, did, yeah, at the next public session. Yeah, you get to, you get to speak once per three minutes. Now, we can't, we can't break the rules, that's what it is, so you can speak again at the next public session.
Yes. Reconvene at 7:40?
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Meeting's adjourned. It is 7:30, we'll reconvene at 7:40. Thank you.
Would everybody please take their seats? All right, good evening, everybody. The work session is now called to order. We already had the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Lawrence, will you please call roll?
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krzyzewski?
Ms. Krzyzewski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Ten of eleven?
Thank you. Any additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have one addition, if I may.
Mr. Haas, go ahead.
I sent you an email, I copied the council and Ms. Lawrence as well and Mr. Skeen, about the C cap registration for the conference upcoming in August. I brought it up last work session, but I thought it would just automatically be on this agenda, it wasn't, so I typed up a real brief draft resolution. So here, if you want to look over that, convenience, of course. But if we could put that on tonight, maybe select members that are interested and debate it for a couple of minutes.
Yeah, put it on the work session here.
Work session, yes, please. So the title is C cap work session.
Yeah, not a resolution, just an item.
An item, I guess, if that's what you want. It's a draft resolution.
We'll add that, we have number 10, the veterans issue.
C cap summer conference registration.
Number 11 would be C cap. Okay. With 10 as the veterans and 11 as a C cap. Sure. Any other additions or deletions to the work session?
Motion to approve the session?
A motion to approve by Mr. Haas.
Second.
Second, Ms. Stevenson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Number one, receive and discuss division reports for May 2025. Ms. Crocambeau's not here, so...
I'll take care of that one.
All right, Attorney Skeen, you got the floor.
Thank you. Attached, we have the division reports, and if anybody has any questions on those reports, feel free to email either myself or Ramilda, and we will answer those questions. Thank you.
That was relatively painless, thank you. Item number two, discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzerne County and the borough of Forty-Fort. That would be page 40 of our packet. And the lease...
That'll be me again.
Go ahead, Attorney Skeen.
So, the, I'll take care of two, three, four.
Okay. How about just number two for now?
No, okay. Well, they're all similarly situated leases, and what happened is...
Okay, I see that.
We met with the borough about allowing a part of the lease that covers the Forty-Fort Soccer Club to be converted into a dog park, and the borough's going to take care of financially fixing that up, putting up the fence, monitoring it, and while doing that, they brought to us the leases, and the leases had expired, one being extended, that hadn't quite expired yet. So what we did was, we redid all the leases, brought them up to date, put in the provision just in case something is needed to go there for the airport, that we would have access to take care of that for the airport, and they're just continuations of the lease with the proviso of having a dog park.
Okay. Does any council members have any questions? Because I know we have someone here from Forty-Fort who have any questions, but I don't have any questions. You okay? Everybody loves dogs, I take it? Mr. Haas?
I think I'm just looking for, may I, Mr. Chair? I'm just looking here, I don't see a fixed dollar amount for the lease. I think it's probably like a dollar, isn't it? I think they're just getting insurance.
Correct.
We're just, it's basically helping out the borough, from what I remember the last time.
Well, we're helping it out, and they're taking care of all the lawn care, so that they're, we don't have to do that.
That's what I recall, very good, thank you.
Mr. Haas, the only question I have is liability. Will the county's going to continue to own all that land, but if there's a bunch of dogs in there?
We have insurance, and they have insurance.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
So that is two, three, four.
I think that knocks off three of them, right there, right?
I like that, we're moving right along here.
Great, great, thank you, Attorney Skeen.
You're welcome.
Item number five, discussion regarding ordinance amending the 2025 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. Is Rizelle, okay, is that on?
Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, so the first item, I get the next several. So item number four is to amend the budget, I mean, is to amend the budget by $2,000 to include an increase in advertising for county council. So that's really due to the fact that the rate for advertising is like unbelievably higher than what we had anticipated when we did the budget. When we did the budget, we were paying like five cents a page, five cents a line, I believe, and now it's a dollar a line, so we keep trying to negotiate that, so we're still working.
Is that with our local newspapers?
It is, yes.
Okay, I think a couple of them are here tonight.
They are. I don't know that they make the decisions regarding the advertising, but yeah, I'm sure the message will get relayed. So we're still trying, we're trying to negotiate that. It happened last year too, we were able to negotiate it down, so we'll see what happens. But that's why it's needed. Do you have any questions?
Any questions on that from anybody? Brings us to item number six, discussion regarding resolution approving a loan from interest, and I don't know if this is accurate, on the UDAG fund to the city of Wilkes-Barre for a sewer repair project. Ms. Rizelle?
That's me too. So Mayor Brown has come to us and asked for a loan, and the amount, well, he actually came to us saying that he needed funding. There was apparently a sewer issue at the corner of Cunningham and Pennsylvania Avenue. There's another sewer issue in another part of the county also, so we tentatively, you know, if you approve it, said, well, we can help you by loaning you the money to fix that problem at Cunningham and Pennsylvania Avenue, and then, you know, he's going to have to get the money to fix the other problem in some other way. But we said we would not give him the money, that we would loan him the money for five years. So five years, interest-free, his payment would be $8,833.33 a month, and he felt that that was, you know, agreeable to them, at least they could afford to pay that, and we felt like we were helping, you know, the area that we're located in, so.
And I thought it was not coming from the UDAG fund, I thought it was community development.
It is coming from community development miscellaneous funds, which includes UDAG, it does. That's where the UDAG money is too, the UDAG interest, all of that is all miscellaneous.
So the UDAG fund, I understand, has been standing around $6 million for a long time?
Correct.
We're not just going to take 500 grand from that, are we?
We're going to loan $500,000 from that, yes.
Out of that fund?
Yes. There are several accounts that include miscellaneous income, it's not just, there's three miscellaneous income cash accounts that they have at this point in time. So we're going to loan the $500,000 out of, obviously, the account that's earning them the least amount of interest, and that's where we'll loan the $500,000 out.
Okay. All right, any other questions, Ms. Stevenson?
First question is, you said it's 500K, but after interest in five years, it's eight...
No, that's his payment per month at 0% interest. So we're proposing loaning him the $500,000 at 0% interest, which would be a monthly payment of $8,833.33 a month, $8,333.33 a month.
Okay, and is Mayor Brown putting any collateral up during this trade, during this loan period, I should say?
I think that that is to be determined.
And I don't think the city would ever want to reneg on a loan because of their credit rating, would be disastrous for them, yeah. Any other questions for Ms. Rizelle?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Haas.
Has this ever been done before? Has Luzerne County ever loaned municipalities money? We've done this before.
Yeah, we have. We just did it in West Hazelton.
West Hazelton Bridge, right?
Yep.
Oh, I wasn't here for that one, okay.
That's only...
I don't know, this is very quizzical to me. I don't know, we have a lot of roads and bridges that need to be repaired, we've got sewage here stinks, we've got a sewage problem here in Luzerne County at our courthouse, and I love Wilkes-Barre, I, Wilkes-Barre was my home for about 20 years, and I like Mayor Brown, I like what Mayor Brown's doing, but I...
However, I...
Where does, can I just hear more of this, Ms. Rizelle? Where'd this come from?
I think the UDAG money has to be used for basically development of that Hotel Sterling site, and create jobs, but go ahead, Mr. Skeen.
I'm all ears, I'm just scratching my elbow down this one.
The monies that we're borrowing from, or lending from, in the miscellaneous account, can't be used for roads.
That's what I thought.
So it's not money that we could use on that particular project.
This particular fund cannot be used for roads.
And again, we did not, we would not agree to give him the money. The request was, can you contribute $500,000, and we said no, we cannot. So the offer was a loan, if it's approved.
And I didn't hear, and what is, so he's going to give us a flat fee at the beginning?
No, he's going to pay us a monthly payment, over five years.
Right. But we're not getting any interest whatsoever on this, it's just a free, okay?
We're not.
I wish Harrisburg would give us some deal like this, you know? But I never see it, I've been asking for 12 years.
Wilkes-Barre is the county seat, so...
I always say, I always said that, the county seat, we have some obligation, I can tell the city out.
I don't think I've ever heard us be so reluctant to help a municipality. I think that's shocking. I said, I don't think I've ever heard Luzerne County Council be so reluctant to support a municipality.
Oh, I'm, it's just me, I'm reluctant.
It happens to be the one, shocking!
I support it.
I'll speak for myself, it's not the council, it's just me, but I'm not reluctant, but again, the devil's in the details, like we talked about last week, that's all. I don't mean to be antagonistic, or, I'm not throwing up flags, but I think we just have a lot of things to spend money on, I don't know, I don't think that's unreasonable to bring that up.
Mr. Lescavage?
I personally, I'm in favor of this, you know, even though it's 0%, I think it shows goodwill with the city. I think we need with the rail station down there, and everything that's going on in Wilkes-Barre, I think we've got to give a helping hand to get this off the ground, and maybe this is the start of a good relationship, so I think we have to build from there.
I hope so.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Sabatino?
I mean, I'd rather get interest, a little bit of interest, but I agree with Councilman Lescavage, we do have a responsibility to the county seat, so I would support this too.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Rizelle? Yes?
I think we still, we should be good neighbors, you know, I mean, just because Harrisburg doesn't do it for us, doesn't mean we can't do it for others.
Exactly, thank you.
Any other comments? We have, Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith?
I'd just like to know what kind of disaster we're probably averting in order to help Wilkes-Barre, right? Because it's probably something dire, so if we don't give this loan, it's probably something awful, right?
Mayor Brown told me it's a sewer 30 feet deep, and it's a complete collapse, and it's a major emergency.
Probably averting a lot more fees or costs in the future.
Major emergency, he said, yeah.
It is an emergency. He has two emergencies, again, we're helping with one, he's...
What's the second one?
What's the second emergency?
Two sewer collapses.
Another sewer issue in another part of the county.
The vote that you've mentioned.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. Rizelle?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rizelle, do you want to stay there for a minute?
I'm going to stay here, yeah.
Okay, item number seven, discussion regarding resolution depositing $299,767 into the reserve fund. Can't we just even that out to 300,000?
No, we can't, because the amount of the check is 299,767.
It's so close, it's so close.
But no, we cannot round that out.
It just sounds a lot better.
Sure, as long as it's higher, it does sound better. Yeah, that's, so that is the C cap dividend that we received, we received one last year, so now we're receiving another one this year, so we're thankful for that. With that deposit, if, you know, that's voted on and it's agreed to, our reserve balance will be at about half a million dollars, 515, 840, to be exact.
Yep, and I thank you for that, and I wish it was higher than that, because we're always dipping into it, taking money out of the reserve fund, so it'd be nice to have a question.
Well, now we're putting an end, so.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Rizelle on that, C cap dividend? Okay, Ms. Rizelle, thank you very much.
Okay.
Item number eight, you want to stay there and talk about anything else?
Me too.
I'm up again.
No, you can be seated, Mr. Skeen will take this one. Item number eight, discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzerne County and the Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority. Attorney Skeen?
Yes, we have Chris here to discuss that, but we've had a longstanding relationship where they utilize and take care of the land for us, they have their office there, and part of the ARPA funding, we gave a grant to the garage, was on that land. So we're just going to give them a long-term lease that solidifies that they're going to be able to stay there and continue doing the good work of flood protection.
Great.
Would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, sure.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Bellman.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. It's, just to provide a little background on more than what Harry provided, for over 30 years, the authority has been using, you know, this building on Cameron Way in Forty-Fort as our levy operations facility. We maintain the building, utilities, and one of our approved ARPA projects is to actually expand this building. We're going to put two-story space on each end to store a lot of our equipment and vehicles that we currently store outdoors, because we've outgrown the current space. And when we were looking at this, we discovered that there's really no agreement which memorializes this arrangement, and to protect both the county and the authority, I approached Harry and Ramilda, we thought it would be a good idea to put some type of agreement together, and that's the agreement that's, you know, that's before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you for waiting all night.
I had nothing else to do.
You're two minutes of fame, congratulations.
I appreciate it, thank, thank you, good night.
You have a good night.
All right.
That moves us down to item number nine, discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an agreement of sale for two parcels of county-owned property located in Hanover Township to Stephen J. and Evelyn C. Humannic. Oh, Ms. McDermott?
Yes. This has gone through the real estate committee several times, and it actually came to council, and we voted to allow them to advertise back on December 6th of 2023. Unfortunately, this got pushed under the rug, but this is two parcels that sit side by side, they're approximately 30 feet wide, and the other one's 20 feet wide. Individually, they fall in the non-buildable category, but the Humannic's home is east of these two lots, so it makes sense for them to bid on it. And remember, Mr. Lescavage, we went back and forth on trying to get more money off of them, and after much examination, decided that the parcels are really not worth anything except to the adjacent property owner. So again, we voted to allow them to advertise back in December 6th of 2023, and they did produce the advertisement just more recently, because again, unfortunately, it got pushed, I don't know where, but she did advertise, and now the next step is for us to vote on whether or not to sell the parcels.
Thank you, Ms. McDermott, any questions for Ms. McDermott? Mr. Lescavage?
I know, like, the last one we passed, I hope this is the last one, though, because the assessed value is 10 grand, and we're selling for 500, and on that thing we passed tonight with the zoning, originally, the reason they got the price they got on that land was because it was unbuildable, so now we changed the zoning, and now they have a half acre there that they could do something with. So my point is, I think going forward...
Yeah, this, unfortunately, like I said, it was something that we had worked on a long time ago.
Yeah, this one was, yeah, it's from '22.
So your point is going forward, though, let's stop the practice of giving away valuable...
Which, both you and Mr. Sabatino did say you wanted to work on a minimum bid schedule, so you certainly can bring that to the real estate committee.
Okay.
Whenever.
Thank, thank you.
Next real estate committee meeting.
We, I think have...
I think I work better with a deadline.
I know, it's like, we, I think we have one packet that came in, and...
How about July 4th?
Oh, no. We don't have a schedule, but...
You're not available that day, I'm going to be at your house.
We'll get one in, we'll get one indefinitely this summer, but there's only one packet at this point, I don't, I don't know what else we have.
All right, any other questions for Ms. McDermott on that issue?
No, sir.
Thank you, Leanne. Item number 10, we added tonight from the voting session, it was the motion to, it was a motion, the issue is to adopt a resolution enacting a veteran real estate tax exemption for non-wartime veterans and surviving spouses. We did discuss it a lot, I think in general, everybody's in favor of this, we just want to make sure we didn't come up with a legal resolution that would, you know, five months, six months later, we'd have to come back and revise it, so go ahead, Ms. McDermott.
Thank you, I could start it, and everybody else can chime in. Okay, so again, we did get a couple different opinions and things thrown at us today, and I know that's a lot to absorb before the meeting, but again, this resolution just goes back to adding only the word "non-wartime." Now, in that...
Do we have to be delighted with what the gentleman said that couple words?
Well, this is what's been debated, it's been going back and forth, all the email and everything that's been going back and forth on it. If we're, we're just trying to exempt the county taxes, we're not trying to do anything for the school or the municipality, they can decide to do what they want, but what we, if we decide to do this, does not influence them to, although, you know, it'd be nice for them to consider it, but again, this is something that is wartime, so what is wartime service? And in one of the email that we received, it goes through the wartime service period, so World War I, World War II, Korean, Vietnam, and then again, what Mr. Wren had mentioned before, the Gulf War, which was from 1990 to the present, because there was no date set by law or presidential... the present, because there was no date set by law or presidential proclamation, so technically, you know, anyone that is one-hundred percent service-related, disabled, right now, it's considered wartime, so they should be exempt from our least county municipal taxes. Um, then, you know, like, we don't have a resolution or an ordinance, that was one thing that I had checked going back, that was the one thing, do we need to pass a resolution just to state that fact? I don't know. I think it wouldn't hurt to have a resolution just to state everything, but the non-wartime is what is hanging every, everyone up, then that's, that was the one thing I was trying to get passed, and there are other counties that have done it, so if they've done it, well, you're asking me, ask him, if you could talk-
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Sabatino.
Mr. Chair, uh, would, can I ask Ms. McDermott to send the, the other-
Sure.
-ordinances from the other counties?
Sure.
So, we could take a look at them, send them out, and then maybe we could see where the discrepancies are with the one that we have on the agenda, and, and write a new one to conform to what the other counties are doing.
That's a great, great question.
And I, I did, I did take it, I had to have it on, I did take it from, um, Tioga County, but I can send out the one that is, uh, it was Pike County, sorry, because there are seven counties that do it, um, so I could send that over, but I just went right the same as that.
I, I would presume we're gonna have this on a voting session in two weeks, so maybe submit it to our administration and have them submit it with our packets, so we could review.
One other thing, um, and I know Mr. Clocker is, uh, I believe, listening, if he's still on or not, um, okay, but going back to the, the statistics, okay, twenty-one thousand veterans in the county, right now, one thousand thirty-nine of them are one-hundred percent disabled, eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight currently get the tax exemption, there's a hundred-and-forty-one remaining, and only twenty of those right now are eligible to be able to get this, because the other ones don't own homes, so, we're just talking about a small percentage of people. Um, I know, maybe the money isn't the worry, you, yes, that's something that we have to consider, because that's what council does, we care about that, but the biggest thing is, I think, everybody's worried about the constitution, the state constitution.
On, on the connect question?
So, uh, go ahead, Ms. Stevenson.
Um, so, yes, so that's, that's actually my question, because if, if Lackawanna County and whatever other county has this already in place, does that mean they're violating the, the Pennsylvania state constitution?
Well, I don't know-
Obviously not.
I don't know if we should hold Lackawanna County up to be the beacon, the other counties you could, but, anybody who raised taxes thirty-seven percent, not having a good day with taxes.
But, but seriously, though, like, the language in place, the rhetoric that's being used, does that mean they're somehow, you know, legally, it's working in that county, but somehow they're not in compliance with the constitution?
According to what Mr. Wren, that's what I was trying to get, that explanation from him and Joanna, I know wants to talk, but, uh, he was explaining that it does go up to the adjutant, and, adjutant, uh, yes, and so, general, and, uh, that gets approved in that office.
So, they're, they're saying yes.
So, if, 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 if we pass it for county council, it still has to be approved, Joanna, I know.
Uh, go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, the constitution's the floor, which means we can't take away rights, and we're not taking away any rights, we're simply adding to the amount of people who can get it. Um, I really don't know why we've had to, I, I understand, it's frustrating to me that we have discussed this so often, uh, and everybody seems to be in favor of it, we are using the same exact kind of resolution, thank you, Jimmy, uh, we're using the same exact kind of resolution, we're not, the research that I have done, that, the discussions I've had with other attorneys, it is not, is so long as we do not go beyond the scope of what the resolutions we have used, that, uh, Councilwoman McDermott has used to build this, so long as we don't go beyond that scope, we are absolutely fine. So, I really think this discussion is over, and I'd really like to see this on the next voting session and voted for, this is like, we're done, we're good, guys, we're, these, they have not been sued, everybody's fine, it's been implemented, we're following suit, I'd really like to just see this, um, I'd like to see this on the next voting session, thank you very much for participating.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Attorney Skeen?
Thank you. As I may have mentioned a time or two before, I do not get a vote, but somebody had brought up to the office, had read a newspaper article, and said, "Can you look into this?" I think it was one of my assistants. So, I signed that out, and Jared looked into it. Years ago, not on this, uh, I think it was when the prior, um, Veterans Department head, uh, had a question, we looked into it and analyzed all the different, um, counties. Now, the issue, though I don't get a vote, I'm still, I do get all the lawsuits we get, and I do have to run compliance, so, there is a conflict in the constitution versus what others have done, and I understand what Joanna is saying, but we were just giving a note so that you would understand what we had found, there's only one case on it, that case says you could do whatever you want to do, as long as you don't go outside of the legislation, so, there's a possibility that we'd be going outside the legislation. Will we have a problem? I don't know, but there's a possibility we would go out of that. Now, when you take into consideration that, and there's been bills that are coming up, so, in Harrisburg, they're discussing this issue, and they may make a change, they may not, again, we can't control that, but we know that they're talking about the issues, so, if they were to take a stand on that and do what they should do and amend the legislation, then there'd be no problem, and we'd be happy to go through. We're just giving council information to go on.
Right.
So, if you're saying that in two weeks you want to pass it, so be it, that's a, just, we're giving you the information, and you could look at the other municipalities, if the adjutant general says we're allowing it to go through, that's fine. Now, I'd also, we'd have to understand, uh, the gentleman that came in today and is talking about possibly losing his house, I don't think anybody's losing their house over county taxes, when school taxes are three, four, five times higher than our taxes, so if we do this, are we saving people if it's only us and not the municipality and the school district? So, I don't know if anybody on council have discussed with colleagues in municipalities if there's a plan to follow if we do that, otherwise, we're going to make a very minor dent in tax bills by passing that here. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Skeen, I, I do have two comments I want to make, um, personally, I don't see why there's a hang-up with the state or federal or anything with the war versus non-wartime. I picture a service member, let's call her Jane Doe, sitting at Fort Bragg in nineteen-seventy, at her desk, and that's her permanent station, and Vietnam War is going on overseas, and let's say, for some reason, she got disabled, right? She would qualify under this rule, but let's say she's here five years later, there's no war going on, she becomes fully disabled, a hundred percent, she wouldn't qualify, I don't see why the distinction, she signed up to serve our country, um, it's not her fault when the war's going on and when the war's not going on, I believe we should grant that exemption to her, to, in the nineteen-seventy-five version and the nineteen-seventy version. Lastly, I want to say, uh, who put this together, attorney, who is it?
Attorney Ferantino.
Attorney Ferantino, he made four recommendations at the end, uh, not for council to do this, but I think they're good recommendations, number one, uh, the administration should formally designate a point of contact with any assessor's office, tax assessor's office, to monitor legal developments at the state level, particularly depending legislation. Uh, also, the, uh, administration should establish a periodic audit process, maybe our controller does that, maybe not, to confirm ongoing eligibility of surviving spouses, especially concerning remarried status, those are the points I brought up a couple times here in the past. Number three, develop educational outreach in cooperation with the DMVA to ensure veterans and their families understand both their entitlements and obligations. And finally, absent any change in the applicable law, any action of county council regarding the implementation of the disabled veteran tax exemption program must adhere to or remain within the confines of constitutional statutory interpretation cited above. I think those four recommendations are good recommendations, that's all I have to say on it. Anybody else?
I think we discussed, I think we discussed over and over again the fact that there are multiple checks on this, multiple checks over multiple years, it goes through mul- it was Mr. Clocker who said it goes up the chain and back down the chain again, there's enough, we have checks and balances. I'd really like to see this on the voting session next time, guys.
I anticipate it would be, I don't know why it wouldn't, yeah, okay, um, yeah, go ahead, Ms. McDermott.
One final thing I'd like to say to that, is if we all can give a LERT exemption, tax exemption, then I think we should be able to give it to our veterans.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, if we're okay, we'll go on to the next, the next item.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Haas, uh, two weeks ago, uh, brought up during the worst session, uh, the necessity of, uh, passing something with the CCAP conference, and, uh, has to do with council members attending and getting expenses paid, so, uh, we added that as item number eleven tonight. And at, Mr. Haas?
You said it, Mr. Chair, it's, um, it's in Seven Springs, which is out in western part of the state this year, everybody, you've all been getting messages from CCAP, we get them all the time, it's four-hundred-and-seventy dollars, uh, individual, for the three-day conference, I guess it's actually three and a half days, so, what this does, according to the charter, it, uh, section two-point-zero-five-D, I sent you on email at the break, so you have that draft on there, but, um, uh, according to the charter, uh, we have to get reimbursed for this, we pay on our own, get reimbursed appropriately with a positive vote from council, and, um, the policy also covers the mileage and the room and board for the three days, so if anybody'd be interested, I, I'd like to submit myself this year, I think I can make it, and, um, I don't see why anybody that wants to go should, should be allowed to go, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Bellman, but, if you have the time, you know, I, I've always found them very beneficial, I know several people went last year, I think they probably agree with me.
Right, it is very beneficial. Would anybody, uh, like to add to the discussion or question, Ms. Stevenson?
Quick question, um, what, what are the dates for CCAP again? Is it the fourteenth and fifteenth?
Seventeenth and twentieth sounds right, Ms. Sabatino, I just seen email-
August?
Turning on there, August, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sunday to, Sunday to Wednesday.
So, now's, now's the time to ask any questions, so then we can put it on the voting session two weeks from now, yes, Mr. Sabatino?
Would we just automatically put the people that we nominated to be the voting members?
I don't think so, I, I think it's a, it's a personal scheduling thing, and anybody that wants to go, I would say, go for it, if you, if you have the time, but it's usually the time is the more difficult thing to come up with, right?
Would we start with the voting members, how about that? Because we should send our, the people that we authorized to be voting members.
Yeah, I mean, the, the whole idea of the conference, at the last day, they take a vote, and they, they prioritize all the agenda for the upcoming year, so then the voting members get to actually vote on that at the end of the year, so, yeah, it would be helpful, but it's not necessary.
Uh, we would put the names two weeks from now in the resolution, so if anybody's interested, uh, you know, please email John Lombardo, the chair, and maybe copy Mr. Haas.
Sure.
Oh, you don't have to copy me, it's not my, my bag, just want to make sure.
Yeah, right, so, oh, how about Ms. Lawrence, how about we involve Ms. Lawrence? Um, I have one question, Mr. Haas.
Oh, no.
You said it's four-hundred-and-seventy per person?
Yes.
Could, could we cut that down, if like, you and I roomed together, like, you know?
Don't threaten him with a gun, huh?
All right, only if it's Jack and Jill bathroom, Mr. Thornton, that's, that's all, yeah, okay.
Oh, two separate rooms.
You sure that's just the registration fee?
Okay. Uh, Ms. Smith, do you have a question?
For once, no.
Oh, exactly, you're lighting, I'm sorry, okay, anybody else have a question? Uh, Attorney Skeen?
So, for us preparing the resolution, uh, you want just four blank spaces, or is it, might be, might there be ten?
I, that's my wife's birthday, I can't go.
Okay, all right, and then we-
Show of hands, anybody who thinks they may want to go, you can always back out.
Yeah.
All right, one, two, three, four, five, looks like five?
And the early bird registration is June thirtieth, so, when I've gone and passed this years ago now, you, you submit the credit card information, you, you put your spot in, and you get it back, and the county reimburses you.
Okay.
All right, but we won't know, because everybody's gonna have different mileage, presumably, they're leaving from different places, so, we can't put a number in.
No.
We'd have to just say that they can submit their bill.
Eligible exemption, okay.
There's a county line item in the county council, we, we put in last budget cycle, so, I think it's two-thousand dollars.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Stevenson?
Um, yeah, so that line item, what happens if we exceed the amount, with participants attending the conference for reimbursement, if we exceed that two-thousand dollars, when we include mileage and, and everything else, what happens then?
You kick Harry Haas out after the first night, no, seriously.
It's a long walk back.
He would've paid already.
Seriously. We could always make it a budget amendment, but if it passed, you know, officially, I think we're okay, but if it went twenty-four-hundred dollars instead of two-thousand?
Okay, and if we made that budget amendment, where would that money be coming from again? Where did the original come from?
For me, for me, the budget's no issue.
That would have to be Ms. Rozell.
The budget's no issue for me, we'd have to go to budget and finance for that.
Right.
I'm just talking about the legal part.
Okay. All right, I, I think we're all-
So, just like the advertising-
Go ahead, Ms. Rozell.
Just like the advertising amendment we did today, and it's a lot of the reserve that's where it would have to come from.
Okay.
You know, on a budget issue.
Okay, well, five times five-hundred, twenty-five-hundred dollars.
Now, does that, is the four-seventy, does that include the room, too?
No, just the res- just the registration fee.
And then, we don't, we don't reimburse the room, or we do?
Uh, well, according, I, I'd give you a draft resolution, that's all said, I would say yes, I-
All right, I didn't see, I didn't see you.
I never, I never did before, but might help people be able to go.
Hotel Six?
Airbnb, LaScavage Incorporated, all those properties out there.
So, it's gotta be by whatever we, whatever the county requirements are, so we can't have somebody stay at Hotel Six and somebody else stay at the Marriott.
She's got a forty-nine-dollar stipend.
All right.
No, there's a nice hostel, hostel down there, there's a-
I can't see.
Twenty-dollar Walmart tent.
Okay, any other, uh, Mr. Sabatino?
Hi, I, I'm pretty sure that, uh, the Seven Springs is where, like, the conference is, and they have the room and board, like, the lodging hall in one spot, but I'm, I'd have to double-check that for you.
I'm sure-
I think everything is all in one place.
CCAP has the blocks of rooms, yeah.
Yeah, we need to reserve early, too.
Any other que- any other questions? Over here, over here, going once, going twice, uh, we're gonna move, no, we're gonna move on to public comment, uh, there was a gentleman here, wanted to comment again for thirty seconds, did he go home?
He left.
Oh, I told him he had three more minutes, so, yes, sir, you want to get podium, you state your name, please, again?
This'll be real quick, uh, Jeffrey Conrad. Yeah, you're up. Uh, Jeffrey Conrad, um, I just wanted to touch on something, what, uh, the gentleman said about, um, how it would work with school taxes and municipal taxes, and this is just with my experience going through the process, um, every school district and municipality said, I got approved, no problem, no hiccups, through the county, went, uh, the application went down to Harrisburg, it is still up to the individual school district and municipality whether they honor that. Now, I've never heard of a case where they don't, but that was just to touch on, um, the gentleman's thought on that with getting in contact with each one, well, that's up to the veteran to take the paperwork and actually go to the municipality, and Burkeheimer, and whoever it goes to. and Burkeheimer and whoever it goes to. The only other thing I'd like to say is, I really appreciate the support you guys are showing, because in the veteran community, we did not think we had this support, to be honest with you, not from the veterans that I've spoken with, which is why I came out and a lot of these veterans, because we thought it was gonna be a quick nope, because it's generally thought of as it's all dollars and cents and money. So I appreciate the fact that, that the reception that we got here this evening, and I did watch the last one on YouTube Live, and appreciate Councilwoman Smith's sentiments that words do matter, but only if there's action behind it, and I'm seeing action, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that, and most of us, either Mr. Perry served, and I know Ms. McDermott, your husband, and my brother was in 20 years, my sister was in four years, my uncles were in World War II, three of them, my grandfather, World War I, I still have a helmet from World War I. We're all veteran supporters, I think.
I have to say, I got you, man. There's a member of my family in the service since 9138.
Wow.
In this country since the French Civil War.
Wow, that goes back quite a ways. Okay. Yes, Ms. Stevenson?
Just a quick question, is there anyone at the VA who's advocating for some of the vets that are there to communicate with municipalities and school districts?
At the VA itself? All right, the VA-
You go to podium.
Thank you. At the actual VA itself, they are strictly a medical facility. For somebody to put in for benefits, they go through some places like local VSOs, Mr. Clocker, you know, county representatives. Just, for instance, I got medically discharged in 2002 or '03. I did not get a VA claim until 2022. I was, nobody tells us that we're entitled to anything. Even after I got my claim and started getting my money, nobody told me until last year that I was property tax exempt. My father got out in 1988, '89, he did not get a VA benefit until 2018, because nobody told him. They don't put this information out. So when the vote goes through, I'd appreciate if you guys would get the word out there, because no, nobody does tell you.
Right.
But as far as the VA, they're two, they're the same entity but different. There's the medical side and the benefit side. Nobody up here can really help you with benefits. You have to go through Mr. Clocker's office. I remember the AMVETS, they started in 1944 for this purpose, veterans trying to help other veterans navigate the system. And then, of course, American Legion, BFWs, all that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the information, and I'm sure two weeks from now, I expect the measure to pass, and then I'm sure the media will get it in the papers, letting everybody in the county know that benefit is available. Thank you. Can we move on to the end of public comment here? Mr. Griffith, go ahead.
I find it interesting that we're, to Mr. Haas's point about Wilkes-Barre City being a good neighbor, really? Seriously? We have Act 13 that we ask for money for the levy maintenance? How much money do we get? Zero. We had an election last year, we needed parking meters bagged for people to come in to vote. I personally called the city, I got no cooperation until I finally got the mayor on the phone and told him, and got kind of indignant with him, and he said, oh, we'll give you exemption on the meters. I appreciate the fact that we want to help everybody, but when are we gonna start helping the people of this county? How about getting rid of the 10% penalty fee that happens in August for our taxpayers? Are we gonna get rid of that? Can we do that at the next meeting? I mean, let's do it. Let's take the 10% away, so if you don't pay your taxes by the end of face, you don't pay a penalty. Let's be all about fixing things for the people of this county, and stop being a good neighbor for everybody else. I don't think that Wilkes-Barre City, should we help them with their pension fund? They're 40% funded. Ours is 85. Let's give them some money. Let's help their pension. Where does it stop? I agree that, you know, they are the county seat. I agree they have issues with the sewer line. That's their problem. We have problems here. I don't see the city coming to help us. We just had a discussion about going to CCAP. I was, Harry was laughing, because I said, ask the city to give us the money to send everybody to CCAP. How about that? That's only $2,500. He could afford that. Where does it stop? They sold the Hotel Sterling lot, they got a pile of money for it, and we got nothing for it. But that was our property at one time, and we had a whole lot of money to rip it down. I get the fact that we want to be good neighbors. It's time for people to give to the county, take care of the people of this county. Let's give the county's taxpayers some relief. Where's the homestead exemption? We could work on that. Give them their $5 million back, give them their exemption back. Harry's been working on that. We've been trying to get, let's help the people of this county. We're gonna give exemptions to everybody except the people that pay the taxes. Let's try and do the best we can to help them. I'm not adverse to helping the city, but quite honestly, if they have a broken water main, are we gonna help them there too? No interest for five years? I'd like to get that deal from them when we need money to pay our debt. We're $26 million in the hole. Why are we loaning anybody anything? Think about it. I don't think that's a good idea. Unless the city wants to come up and be part of the Act 13 fund and agree to what the committee, when Mr. Thornton's committee agreed to, to said, we need to have a partnership on that levy fee that's costing us $50,000, $80,000 a year. We get nothing from anybody. We take care of the levies, we take care of everything, because it's the right thing to do, and we want to make sure the city looks good and the levies are maintained. But that doesn't negate them. They're charging us a sewer fee on a property right here on the levy for nothing. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else here in the audience would like to speak? Is there anybody, it looks like on the Zoom, really, we have Mark Raible, I thought you'd be in bed by now, Mark. Go ahead, Mark, go ahead.
Not really, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, not really. I'm still alive and well, kicking, and I'm very disappointed, Mr. Chairman, because I thought, you know, you know, reasonable minds would prevail in terms of, you know, looking at alternative options that would benefit Wilkes-Barre, that they could get a Penn Vest loan for 1% interest, Mr. Chair. You and Mr. Lescavage know that Penn Vest program is a 1% interest loan program, and they also would have an availability to apply for, on an emergency situation, if Mayor Brown, what he said is, you know, is indeed needed, is an emergency, he could apply through Representatives Eddie D. Fashinsky and Senator Marty Flynn. I'm sure they would be happy to co-sponsor, you know, for that application through DCED, through Penn Vest, for a 1%. I mean, come on, really? I mean, and, Mr. Chairman, just one, one other thing that council needs to be made aware of and manage. By giving this kind of loan for a sewer project, you open up the floodgates for the three other cities and all the other municipalities, because what you do for one, you must do for all. And that's not, that's not a gripe, that's not, you know, like a shoot, that's, that's reality. Because 76 municipalities, Mr. Chairman, in Luzerne County deserve equal treatment for their citizens and for the municipalities that they live in by the county. You cannot just do it because of political expediency, because it's an election year. Okay? And, and please, don't tell me that it's not, because I think all of us that have an inkling of political savviness knows what the real deal is. Okay? I understand it's an election year, but please, let reasonable minds prevail in terms of alternative options that would benefit all the people, instead of just pandering for votes here and there just to, just to win an election. I think that, that would only be fair to all the residents of Luzerne County, and I think the, the homestead exemption should be looked at for the veterans. If it can't be done on a standalone, use the homestead exemption to have the veterans,